First thing under the chair's approval of the agenda, we do have some additions.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with additions.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, and second by Grant to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have to...
Oh, sorry. Thank you for your reminder.
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney? Commissioner Gross?
Aye. Okay, any citizens here, anything on the computer?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let me get the minutes from November 10th we need to approve.
Move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Grant to approve the minutes from November 10th. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney? Commissioner Gross?
Aye. And now the bills of vouchers, which we've seen and reviewed.
Some of them.
Motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Kevin to approve the bills of vouchers. Roll call.
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney? Commissioner Gross?
Aye. And we'll move into our COVID Weekly Update, with Kathy and Jamie are here today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I think you've all received the handout with the data as of November 23rd. So in Clay County, we have 4,451 cases that are positive. We are sitting at the 55 deaths. And our 14-day case rate per 10,000 people is 161.30. So that went up from the previous 14-day period, which was 123.4. So we know that that case rate is going up as we're testing more people and we're seeing more positive cases. And again, that's the case rate that the schools use, one of their data points, to determine their learning model. The Minnesota positive cases, 267,500, and we have 3,265 deaths. Their positivity rate cumulatively is 7%. So you see, the numbers still continue to increase as far as our cases. The next page gives the grid. So we have 883 active cases as of November 18th. So that's how many cases that we're currently following. The exposure, and that has increased as well, the number of confirmed cases, and of course, those no longer needing isolation, and then the active cases. And the exposures are still pretty consistent, where it's community exposure, as well as sometimes it's unknown. And then the ages of cumulative cases. So Commissioner Campbell had asked for the ages of active Clay County cases. So you can see, we have the grid on top, where it's the cumulative cases. And then the grid on the bottom is the ages of the active cases. So you can see, you know, a little bit of variation with the ages, but we still have the 20 to 24 and the 30 to 34 that, as far as our active cases, are the top, and then the 25 to 29. So those groupings are, the cumulative cases, of course, for the 20 to 24 that you can see are the highest. So some similar age categories. Is that what you were looking for, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
To me, it tells a story.
Yeah, it tells the story. That's right. So, so any questions on, as we're looking at the cases that continue to rise in our counties and as well as in Cass County? We're also seeing the increases, I believe, that data. Oh, did I forget to print that off? Oh. I apologize for that. I don't see the Cass County data.
Kathy, I see, thanks for including the ages of Clay County cases. I appreciate that. Do you have the average age? Unfortunately, I heard yesterday we had another death, which is sad. And so we're at, what, 56 deaths? Do you have the average age of those that we have lost to COVID?
You know, 44 of the deaths have been in long-term care facilities. So the age categories there are the senior population. So the other, I don't have completely the ages. You know, we had a 21-year-old. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. We had a 21-year-old. But I don't have the numbers of the other cases. I can certainly get that. So 44 of those were long-term care.
And I think that, I'll talk a little bit about that long-term care piece. But I think it's important to know that we're seeing this spike within this certain age demographic of cases. And even though it may not affect you, you may feel fatigued or maybe get over it right away, you are likely spreading it to folks in these other categories that will experience far worse conditions. And I think that's the message that I think is getting lost with people, is, oh, I got COVID and I felt fine the next day. Well, did you infect anybody else? And if you did, did they feel fine right away? I mean, that's the question that I think people need to think about.
Sure. And Jamie will touch on that as she talks a little bit about that.
Well, I want to expand a little bit more. And it even, you know, I mean, that's a real critical piece of this. But also, you know, and I said, I think there's, amongst some age groups, I think there's a lot of carelessness. And that carelessness is also causing our businesses to have to be shut down. So it's even economically hurting. You know, not only that they can spread it to somebody who might have conditions, but the age groups that are more susceptible to this. So it's a double-edged deal here. And until people wake up, we're going to be shut down for a while.
Well, and we talked last week about, you know, even managing your Thanksgiving gatherings. Now, again, it's because you have, you know, various age groups getting together, and it's the asymptomatic spreaders, can be the youth, can be others. So, you know, the CDC was initially saying no more than three households together. They made that a little bit stronger, because there's so many gatherings where people are spreading it, unknowingly so. And so now they're stating, you know, they really are recommending just your immediate household and not gathering with other households. I know it's a tough pill to swallow. People are, we know, are not going to follow that. But that's because the numbers are so high and they continue to rise. And we expect them to continue to rise in the next couple of months, particularly because of the holiday gatherings. And so it's hard. It's economically hard, and it's hard for those that are spreading it to the most vulnerable, the ones that have diminished immune systems, and those that are more vulnerable to hospitalization and deaths. So that's why the message is so strong about those gatherings. So we send the message, because that's a recommendation by the experts and what they're predicting for the future of this virus. So the message is clear, to avoid the gatherings. It's another way we can try to, you know, stop this virus spread before we get the vaccine. What Colleen handed me was the Cass County case numbers. So they have 15,405 cases. So that's up about a little, around 4,000 from the last week. And their cumulative positivity rate is 20.38. It was 16.99 last week. So theirs continues to rise as well. So we have some increases on both sides of the river. We just have to understand that to slow the spread, you know, we still state the obvious measures until there will be a vaccine, which will be some time yet before we get a vaccine for the mass population and then be able to have herd immunity. If, once we get 60 to 70% of the population vaccinated, then we can have that herd immunity, so keeping everyone safe, safer than we are. Questions on, before Jamie jumps in? Any questions on any of the data?
Okay, I have a hard time seeing when I look down with my mask, so I'll hold this up. So first of all, I just want to talk a little bit about the saliva testing site in Moreheads. We've been sharing those numbers with you. So the week of November 15th, there were 5,817 people served. Number of Minnesota residents was 3,201, and the non-Minnesota residents were 2,616. Of those, there were 453 that tested positive. And our positivity rate was at 17.11 that week. The previous week, we had been at 21.09, and the week before that, we were at 22.18%. So that's kind of where we're sitting with our positivity rate. Again, the response has been excellent from those that are participating. We did share your comments about, you know, not really knowing what to do once they are there. That's part of what we're working on with our media campaign as well. That same comment came across the state to, from other public health agencies that are hosting the saliva testing sites. So Minnesota Department of Health also was sharing that information with Valt, the company serving them, that it's not real clear, what do I do, you know, as I wait for my test results? So that was a common theme that you shared across the state.
And let me just jump in real quick. The hope was that they would, there would be a handout for people.
Yes, I think that would be very good.
And Valt had, you know, their ideal process was, you know, paperless, but we're hoping that they'll accept just a handout with that information in there. So that's what we're working on.
We talked a little bit about posting signs, but there's just so much. You know, it's kind of, if you walk in and there's so many things posted, it's a little overwhelming. And it's, you know, that sign, "Sign Everywhere" song, you just don't see it, basically. It's too much information if we post that. So we're working on that at the state level with Valt. The next thing I want to talk about is just a little bit about the vaccine. The vaccine hesitancy is still out there. There's a lot of discussion about whether people will have vaccine or not. And just wanted to really stress the fact that the reason, you know, the concerns are about the shorter timeframe for developing the vaccine, and the reason for that is resources and manpower. And so if we think about it, it makes sense, as we add more resources, financial resources, and we add more staffing, we are moving quicker. But the COVID vaccines, and, you know, basically, the trials have included tens of thousands of study participants to generate the scientific data and other information needed by the FDA. So basically, the FDA is still making that determination about the safety and the effectiveness of the vaccine. The clinical trials are being conducted according to the rigorous standards of the FDA. That hasn't changed. What has changed is the resources and the manpower being contributed to that process. And in the first phase, there's generally a small number of healthy people that are tested. In the second phase, there are more people with various dosages, tested on hundreds of people with typically varying health statuses and different demographic backgrounds. And then thirdly, thousands of people in randomized controlled studies involving broad demographic backgrounds. That process has not changed for this vaccine. Okay, next thing I'm going to talk about is the COVID-Aware Minnesota app. My understanding is this app is being used by many states. The Commissioner of, the Commissioner in Minnesota, the, excuse me, Governor of Minnesota actually talked about this, and the Commissioner of Health, and the Director of the Infectious Disease for Minnesota Department of Health in a public announcement. But basically, the more people that use this app, the better it works. So they're encouraging us to download the app and get it. The Apple and Google partnership was created with data privacy at its foundation. So that, you know, concern of data privacy, Apple and Google are working on that. It does not use GPS or tracking your location. It does not share your identifying information with others, not Google, not Apple, not the Minnesota Department of Health. It does not access personal information on your phone. When two phones are within six feet for 15 minutes, they exchange codes via Bluetooth. When someone tests positive, they receive the code. The positive person can then type in the code and alert others anonymously. The exposed person gets a notification that they may have been exposed during a general timeframe. No location is given. This can be helpful for businesses, religious spaces, schools, universities. Anyone who spends time in Minnesota is encouraged to download the app.
Jamie, I had a question on that. Does that, would that pick up, in the case of our local area, would that pick up North Dakota phones?
It should, basically.
So if they download the app?
It's about the location. So basically, it is a code that you get, and that code notifies others that have been around you. And the other thing, too, is that it really is, you know, they're encouraging, like universities. The only thing that they kind of talked about, the infectious disease director talked about, like our plastic dividers may create a barrier. But again, if you think about that, that's a barrier to protect you as well, you know? Were you going to say something?
Nope.
Okay. Then the next thing that I wanted to just, well, I understood that we were going to talk a little bit about convalescent plasma, so maybe I will just pass that on to you.
Yeah, well, thank you. So we've been talking about this plasma, and I have somebody close to me who works at Sanford who's did some research on this. And I think there is a difference in, and there've been people who have been asking, well, if I donate plasma, can I, you know, can I designate that to go to an individual? No, you can't do that. But what you can do, depending on where you go, for example, Vitale, how did?
Vitale.
Vitale. And I've been, and I was told Red Cross, but Red Cross, we might have to do a little more research on. But those two, any plasma that's donated goes to patients. The BioLife and Tele...
Telecris.
Telecris? Telecris, those go to research. Now, obviously, that's important, too, but I think they're, and so, for example, Vitale and Red Cross, they do not pay for the plasma. But that plasma then goes directly for patient care. The BioLife and the Telecris, they do pay for it. And I suppose that's partly why it goes to research, because I'm sure that's where the money is coming from to pay for it. However, there was this individual mentioned that a person could go to do the, like the BioLife, I think you'd get $400 for donating twice. And now I think it's gone up to $700 for eight times, or something like that. But there's also the opportunity where you could do that and then switch after a period of time to the other one, where it can go to the patient, or you could do the patient one first. But you have to talk with them. But I think there's been a lot of interest in the public on wanting to get their plasma to the patients who need it, because that's in such a limited supply. And so that's the information that, and I think you kind of confirmed the same thing.
Right, I communicated with a couple of the medical officers at both Sanford and Essentia who confirmed about Vitale. We just, they didn't mention Red Cross, but Jamie noted that they have a way to sign up for the convalescent plasma, is what they call it. I just wondered if Red Cross, I know that they provide probably the donations around the nation. I just wanted to make sure that they did provide it to our immediate hospital systems, Sanford and Essentia. So they certainly are taking those donations of the convalescent plasma, so that is correct.
Yeah, I guess it's, having had a lot of people asking about
Yes.
being able to, wanting it to go to patient care, the answer is, if you want that done, Vitale is the one, or Red Cross is the place to go for that. But you won't get paid for it, but at least it'll help with patient care, so.
Yeah, so thanks for checking into all that. We'll definitely put that out on the website and in various places, so people are aware of that. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
So can I share a little bit of information about that? I know we've talked quite a bit about this at the board meeting, but I think, looking at the number of people that we have in the community now that have recovered, we want to make sure that people do understand. It's like, if you fully recovered within the last 14 days, you can donate. And so what that means is that basically, because you were able to fight off COVID, your body has antibodies that are in the plasma, that if you donate that, it can be used for people that are in the hospital. And so just to be clear on what that means, convalescent, you know, somebody's recovering, and so you're able to donate that. So if you've been positive, and you have actually been more than 14 days since you've recovered, you have the ability to help someone who isn't able to fight off the disease themselves. And so that is, I did call Vitale directly, and they said that all of their donations go locally. I wasn't able to connect with Red Cross, but their website said us to help patients, you know? And that's as far as we could get to confirm that, but we will follow up on that as well.
So based on your numbers, Jamie, there's 3,500 people that we know would qualify right now to do that.
Exactly, absolutely. And it's very easy. I went to both websites, you know, all I did was type in donate plasma, convalescent plasma, the Red Cross, and Vitale. It's easy to register online. For Vitale, they were booked out till December 11th, was the first available appointment on their website. So that's a good thing. I think people are getting the message and registering. With Red Cross, it says that they will contact you in two to three days to schedule an appointment. The thing they have to do is make sure that you're able to donate. It's based on your weight, it's based on medication. So if you can donate blood, you can donate plasma. Then the other thing is, it has to be at least 14 days since you've recovered. So Vitale is in Fargo.
Jamie, do they test if you go in and don't have a positive case on file? Do they test your plasma for antibodies?
It does say that in order to schedule an appointment, you need confirmation.
Okay. But they still take plasma donations anyhow?
Yes.
Correct.
So if I were to donate, would they test my plasma for antibodies?
That's a good question. But on their website, it says that they actually, if you want to donate convalescent plasma, you need to have that positive confirmation.
So and again, I, you know, I've seen a situation where there was somebody in the ICU who could not get the amount of plasma that may have felt because there wasn't enough. So, you know, that's kind of the message.
Yes.
If you have a loved one that's out there, and you want them to get what they, what they need, so.
Right, absolutely. And again, there's phone numbers, too. You know, we can post those on our website and on Facebook. Just because you can't get an appointment until the 11th doesn't mean, it's kind of like our saliva testing site. Their appointments are booked up, but they say, just walk in. So I want to encourage people to call, and we'll post that information. The address is in the phone numbers, or Vitale, or American Red Cross.
Oh, yeah. And just back to Commissioner Campbell, you were asking when Jamie was talking about that COVID-Aware Minnesota. And there's 20-plus states that are using that, North Dakota isn't one of the states? And so they will have the ability, will?
Well, I would think, because we're right on the border area there, it should, you know, if you're...
It should, yeah. And now that they're one of those states anyway.
You have somebody with a Fargo phone over here.
Right, absolutely. So, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have had some discussion with medical staff at our area hospitals, as well as Long-Term Care Facility Administration over the last week. And the message that was underlying in all of those conversations was that they are being regulated so strongly by the Department of Health and public health and following all of the parameters to which they've been given, but it's not enough to keep their staff safe. And so in those conversations, a question just came, what, why isn't this message getting portrayed to different areas to help us keep our staff safe? And I understand that the governor's order has kind of changed a little bit about that. But can we talk for a second about the 14-day case rate per 10,000 people? And when the governor came out with that recommendation in August, the recommendation was, here are the parameters up to 50. And there are areas, school districts within our county, that are following that pretty well in terms of what they're doing with schools. I know some of the schools are going all online, but then some are, our case rate is, what, 160 right now? There are still schools that are meeting in person based on that. And so I've asked countless times in different weeks, we did all of this in April, and our case rate was this. Now our case rate is this, what are we doing? And so the question from the administrators from these health facilities was, okay, what's the recommendation now that we're off the charts based on where we were? And we can't, we're on borrowed time with keeping staff healthy if these numbers are just expanding to what they are. And I, you know, I don't have this stat in front of me, but if you just do simple math and think, okay, if one person that's positive infects one and a half people or two people, which I think is probably on the conservative end, then your positive cases just are growing exponentially. And I think we've kind of seen that based on what the graph is doing. So what more can we do, or what more are you hearing from DHS about these case positivity rates that are off the charts?
Yeah, and then Jamie can jump in, too. The positivity rates are high. This is quite a surge, actually, across our country. The reason why they're using that rate for K-12 and higher ed is it's just one tool in the toolbox. They have multiple tools that they have to look at. So how can they keep the distance learning, or the hybrid, or in-person? They have to base it on their staffing. Now, that's, again, I'm going to the K-12 and higher ed. So they're using this positivity rate just as one tool. But what they're finding in the schools, it's, the spread is not in the schools. It's a safer place to be for the K-12 students. It also seems to be a safer place in classroom for higher ed. The spread is outside in the community. So what they're seeing is, it's this community gathering, the community groups being out and kind of throwing caution to the wind, and not following the guidance. So it's not that the schools, if the spread, and we give the schools all their individual data, if their spread was really high in the schools, they would change course immediately. But it's not. It's, the numbers are low. And for working all distance learning... And for working all distance learning, it's a hardship on those teachers. They're really struggling with that. So, that gets to be a challenge. Now, in long-term care, it's a different story. And I know that each long-term care facility, and Jamie has worked more closely with those, they have a resource person assigned to them. So, each long-term care facility has, and it's MDH, a person that's assigned to assist them with all of their, with their need to test, with all of their infectious processes in place. DHS is who is making the stringent rules. So, the Department of Human Services, who licenses the long-term care, they're really, the rules are pretty stringent. MDH is providing the resources for each of those facilities. And Jamie can expand on that.
Well, and I get that, but what they're saying is they're being monitored, rightly so, because of why I asked what our death ages were. Forty-four of our Clay County deaths have been in long-term care. So, rightfully so, they're being scrutinized more. But what they're saying is we are, we are just a moment away from an exposure in a nurse that they get through community spread, which again, on this graph, it's coming from community spread, to it getting into their facility. So, they're following all the rules they can, but.
And we agree with that. You know, the issue is that it is about community spread. So, you know, that's what we're trying to control. You know, talking about one household for Thanksgiving, talking about, you know, not traveling outside of the state of Minnesota, you know, those kinds of things. Shutting down businesses, that's about trying to control the community spread. But also the app, the app will help us to get information to people quickly. So, I, you know, that's the case. It's about community spread, which is a challenge, you know, when it's coming into their facility.
And just for the sake of argument's sake, I understand that. I've canceled, we've canceled our family plans to leave because it's not the smart thing to do right now. But if my kids can't sit at a table at Thanksgiving with members from one other family or two other families, then how are kids in Clay County still sitting in a classroom with 20 other kids from different households? And I, it's crazy trying to teach these kids online. I'm living it. A lot of people are. But that's where I think people are starting to get frustrated, is how do you rationalize me not sitting down at Thanksgiving with family members when we have, you know, kids in classrooms or parties like Kevin's talking about, the people that aren't taking it seriously? It's just if we're gonna be all in to try to protect our vulnerable people and keep the hospitals open, then we need to be all in. But it's just, there's not the same story or regulation that's happening to those facilities based on other areas.
Mr. Chair, thank you for those comments. I want to point to this again.
Yep.
Based on these numbers, if you're in the age group from 15 to 44, you have 77% of the active cases in Clay County. Ages 15 to 44. And if you look at these charts, the current active is pretty close to the cumulative over the time.
Yep.
So, again, out of the 4,436 total confirmed cases, probably 75 to 80% are from that same age group. And again, I'm trying to pinpoint here where I think there's a problem. And the problem was, is, you know, I think a lot of these people in this age group, they go through this and they see it, and their friends have had COVID. And, oh, hell, that was no big deal. I got through that like nothing. 99% of the people who died, I'm sure 99 point something, are outside of that age group.
Right.
But they got it from somebody.
Right.
So, if you're in the 77% that have it, chances are you're in 77% of the ones who are giving it to others. It would just seem to me that mathematically, that there's a stronger chance that that's where the spread is coming. So, I guess my message is there's got to be, amongst these age groups, there has to be a little bit more realization as to what's going on here and what they can do. I've had COVID since then. I just want to share an experience. I went into a place, and I'm not going to say where. And I went in, I walked in, I had my mask, and I sat down. And I watched these kids come in. No masks, no masks. And I flat out said to one of them, and a friend of mine said to one of them, put your mask on. And they just laughed. They said, we don't need to wear a mask. It's college night. We don't need to wear a mask. I mean, this is kind of where this is going, and it's.
The higher ed, you know, they will do the online or distance learning. I believe it was following Thanksgiving through till their semester starts in January. So, they're going to do all online. I believe all of our higher ed agreed to that, Concordia, MSUM, and M State.
And again, I'm not saying this is all college kids either because I said the age group where 77% of it is, and it goes up to the age of, and even Commissioner Mojo said her, even her age group, she sees a lot of, you know, I refer to it as carelessness. I really do, you know?
Yeah. Right, it's.
But this, this should speak volumes to people if they look at it.
It should, absolutely.
Well, it's basically Clay County ages 15 through 44 are the highest age groups.
Yeah, well, that's about 77% of all active cases.
That's right.
Now, if there was a little bit, if there was a little bit more care and following, wearing your mask and the social distancing amongst those age groups, do you think we'd see these numbers?
It'd certainly be reduced.
It'd certainly be reduced. And maybe the deaths would be reduced.
Right. And that's the hard message when there's so many people with a mindset about the masking and social distancing.
Wear your mask, people.
Yep, we agree. If you follow the public health measures until we get those vaccines, which is into the new year.
Thank you. And patience with me.
Okay, anything further?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for a very informative report. Those really helps. I guess the message today is wear your mask. And with that, we'll go into the CARES Act committee update from Mr. Larson and Mr. Brook.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're getting to the point where we're sort of wrapping up our, hopefully, our committee work. This past week, we met on one occasion. We've, the cities and townships have had their deadlines as far as the times where they can utilize the CARES funds for spending. That was November 15th. Counties or townships and cities were required to return those funds to the county by last Friday. And we did receive a total of three, three townships did return roughly about $20,000 back to us. The county does have until December 1st to utilize the CARES, any of their CARES dollars and have to return any remaining funds by December 10th. And again, just a reminder from MMB that it is, from the county standpoint, we have to write the check by December 1st, not have spent the money. And so, if we do not write that check by next Tuesday, we are the responsible as a county. So, with that, I'll turn it to the air.
Okay. The charts that you have here, I've added two things that are on the board agenda today. The CARES committee decided that it would be wise to extend the ASP security contract for the Family Service Center for additional two quarters. That will take us through into June. And that cost was $23,529. The other thing that was added was $6,500. These are some items that RDO is leaving for us at the new building. Some of them are the veri desks where they, it goes up and down, the computer and your desk can go up and down. We have some of those in the county already. Sometimes we get requests from doctors or something for somebody that requires like a standing desk. And so, these would come in handy. They're giving it to us for a very good price. And also, the TVs that are in the conference room right now are giving us those at a reduced cost as well so we don't have to tear them out, take the mounts and then buy our own or put them all up. So, that's where the $6,500 comes from. So, those are the only two things that have been added for this week's board meeting. I think we will have some more next board meeting to finish it out. It's been a long and productive format, I can say.
So, we've spent a significant amount of time over the last week just collecting our invoices and making sure that they're prepared for payments. We had a significant number of them today in bills and vouchers, and we'll be wrapping up next Tuesday. Just a couple other quick things. We are closing on the south, the building in South Morehead this afternoon. And also, we've been working with Clayne McCarthy and our department heads on the floor plan for that building. And so, just so you're aware on that, and I think that concludes my update.
You mentioned Clayne McCarthy. Were they here yesterday to go through the?
They did. We did. They just met individually with the four land records departments to kind of hone in their plan. They're going to present next Monday with their final plan. And at that point, then they would be, the project would be ready for a bid or estimating, so.
Mr. Chair, as Steve reported, we were under some pretty stringent guidelines in terms of deadlines from the Office of Management and Budget. And we did the best we could to acknowledge the needs as we saw it up until that point. None of us could have predicted that we would have another executive order and continued closures this last week from Governor Walz. And I've had several calls from different folks in the community saying, okay, can, you know, would this be an eligible CARES expense? Is, are there more rounds of relief from the CARES Act dollars? And there's not because of the deadline. As you heard, the deadline from the cities was on the 1st?
15th.
15th. Ours will be on December 1st in terms of getting stuff to the county or county board to approve. There are advertising deadlines, and there's just not time for that. And I think it reiterates the point that we need to continue to advocate to state leaders about the hardships that have been incurred because of these things. There are businesses that will close. There have been announcements from businesses that will close. Unfortunately, those are businesses that I've seen that have been actively applying for help in the form of grants, and there's just, we just didn't know what was going to happen. If we would have, maybe we would have changed how we addressed it. But we spent the dollars in a way that we thought was the most beneficial to help the most people for the county based on the time that we had. And so, I encourage people to not be so quick to add something to your Amazon cart and purchase it. Almost every business in our community, all of our communities, have been going above and beyond to offer curbside pickup or takeout. It is time for us to help our community by shopping locally as much as possible to get us through until we have the opportunity to advocate for continued funding from the state and federal level.
If I can follow up on that, Mr. Chair. I think I heard just on this morning's news or late last night that Governor Walz has called a special session to deal with this closure thing and its impacts on businesses and people. So, hopefully, something will come out of the, I think his words were that he couldn't wait for the federal government anymore, that the state needs to act. So, I agree with Commissioner Mojo. Unfortunately, you know, we've done the best we can with this. Certainly, we did not anticipate another round of closures like we're seeing now. But so, you know, I think the, with the way we handled the current CARES dollars, I think it was still, you know, well-used funds. Are we looking for a motion on your?
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, Darren did do an excellent job of going through my next two agenda items through that process. So, we do have two items before you. We have actually three with the agenda addition. But the two that Darren addressed were the ASP security CARES, ASP security continuing that through, it would be through July 2nd. And that would cost $23,529.80. And we'd be allocating funds from the resiliency category.
I would move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to approve the extension of the contract with ASP security. Any further discussion?
And I just want to point out too that we've been told through the CARES committee that that's working out very well. That security is working out very well over there. So, there's been a couple instances where they were thankful that they had them to take some action, so.
Okay, Roque.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Thank you. The second item that Darren had mentioned was the purchasing of 18 television mounts and 45 desks from RDO. Originally, these were items that RDO had planned to take with them to their new location. And subsequently, that's why it wasn't initially negotiated into the sales price. The funding just for the televisions alone and the mounts are significant savings for us. And as Darren mentioned, there's other benefits to the desks through medical requests and also cost savings in purchasing those desks versus the full electric movable desks. So, with that, I would request a motion to approve the purchase of $6,500 through the infrastructure mitigation category. So, move.
Yeah, motion by Grant to purchase the TVs and the mounts.
Second.
And we've got a second by Grant, excuse me, Kevin, sorry, any further discussion? Is this all stuff that we're going to be able to use? I mean, I realize you're saying that, yeah, it's a good deal and all that stuff.
Yeah, you know, the televisions would be things that we would already have, we would have had to replace, which I can tell you would have cost more than $6,500 just in the televisions and the mounts. And so, and as Darren mentioned, I think we already have had a number of requests for those desks for medical issues. And so, I think that'll be something that would certainly.
That's the urbanomics.
Yeah. It would certainly be something that would be beneficial to have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would point out too that there were some other equipment that was offered to us too that we did decline. That, so we did not, we chose what we felt was appropriate and would be beneficial to us, and we declined the things that you may have questioned whether we needed them or not, so.
Okay, very good. Roque.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Let's go into the sweeper now. The additional agenda item. Can we take that now? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you recall, we did have a request before you for the DMV allocation for some equipment. One of the things that we found here in the first week is that 8,800 square feet of carpet takes a long time to clean. And so, the request before you this morning is to purchase a sweeper. It's got a three-foot swath that will make the process much faster and also save money from the perspective of our maintenance staff. I'm going to approve the request.
Got a motion by Grant to approve the request to purchase the sweeper.
I second it.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion on that?
This will totally be made up just in labor savings over time. It's clearly.
Yeah, it is quite a few square feet to clean there. And I do have to say that DMV is working, as far as. And I do have to say that DMV's working, as far as I'm concerned, has been working good. I've been walking over there in the mall every day and there's never really, from 10 to 15 there and stuff like that, so. I think it's working good over there, so. Probably it's the new program, probably people don't know where it's at yet. I don't know, but I thought it's, they're doing a good job.
Yeah, no, it's been a good, it's been a good transition. We've received lots of positive comments and, and I, I do agree with the, the state, the state system seems to be much more efficient. And so those combinations make it a nice, nice addition to Quay County.
Okay.
That sweater's not in that chart, but I'll have it in there next week.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, we've got a motion. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Darren, you said it wasn't in the chart, but was it in that, in that remaining balance? Was that after that or before that?
That's not included either.
Not included in that remaining?
And, and I would note for, for the commission, because we, we just, we did receive two of the, two of the checks back from the township, the remaining funds of $39,195, that, that roughly $11,000 is not included. We also, we also, this board approved Georgia to, to purchase some toilet seat covers, apparatus, that because of the, the age of our toilet seats, our toilets over there, they didn't properly fit. And so there's a return of roughly $26,000 that will also be added to, to this, this amount, so.
Anything else?
And, oh, I, I do want to point out, I, on the CARES stuff while we're at it, I, I know Commissioner Whalen, you had, you had suggested that we look at some of the stuff that the Recorder's Office, and so we're, we're, you know, we're still looking closely at that and if we can find a way to incorporate that, we're, we're going to try to do that, so. You know, we're, right now, we're getting down to counting the last pennies here and to see what we have available, so. I just wanted to let you know that you had requested that, so we're working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into the grant funding application for the Agassi Recreation Trail. Dave Overbolt.
Good morning.
Morning, Dave.
This is our annual submission for the OHV or Highway Vehicle Application and Grant Resolution. If you remember, a few years back, we took over a five-mile portion of this trail, the Agassi Recreational Trail, the Art Trail. It starts in the city of Ulin and goes up to the county line. And then from there, Norman County has a piece that goes through their county and then whole county takes over after that. So it's, it was one big piece. Now, all three counties are kind of managing and taking care of maintenance and that's exactly what this is for, maintenance and oversight of the trail. This year's 2021 grant is for $8,125. And there's several agencies that kind of help out with this. Norman County does some mowing for us up there since they mow to the county line, so they just do our piece and we pay them and get reimbursed. And then there's the Mudslinger Group, they do a lot of cutting of wood and some scraping around and just doing some other general maintenance. They do it. There are also the snowmobile portion of that that I don't get involved in, but, so they're very, very familiar with the DNR reimbursement forms. So far, there hasn't been any hiccups with this. It's just kind of standard submission. DNR's good to work with on it.
Okay, so it's all been plenty of money in this grant to take CARE of stuff.
Right.
Mowing and snow, snow grooming.
We also, I also get reimbursed for the liability insurance. So I take a portion of our NCIT liability insurance. I think I get $1,500 every other year for that too that comes back to the county. Trying to get every piece that would associate with the trail, I guess, to reimburse to Quay County.
Yeah. Okay, we've got a request for a resolution to be adopted.
I'm going to motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny to do a top resolution 2020-36.
Second.
We've got a second by Grant. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we have highway track and later on.
Right.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
This will go into the solid waste department to amend the landfill construction with Burns McDonald Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I come before you today to give an amendment for the professional services for Burns and McDonald. Essentially, what the amendment is for is the citizen drop-off that we've talked about before. Citizen drop-off is an area where we're going to be able to have citizens go separate from the top of the working phase to drop off their material. So that's what I'm coming to, working for you with today.
Mr. Chair, we usually will have a dollar amount.
The dollar amount is included in the amendment and the dollar amount is $29,401.
Okay, I guess it just didn't show up on this cover sheet here.
Okay.
Twenty, how much?
$29,401.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
Second.
Here we've got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve the request to amend the landfill construction. Roll call votes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The, it's going to be completed hopefully by the end of the year, if that's what we're projecting. Grant was out there yesterday and we're making pretty good progress out there, so it's moving right along. I'll be coming to you next week. There's some equipment requests that we'll have and I'll be coming to you next week with those as well to finish up the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Yeah, I was out there yesterday and it is, it's, the weather's been cooperating and things are moving right along. It looks, it looks really good. They're doing a really great job and, and, you know, the equipment Kirk's talking about, the, the trucks that are going to be needed for the changes. I think the staff has done an amazing job in doing their due diligence and finding the best possible deals for the county. And so I think next week he'll bring that forward, but it's, it's impressive what they've done, so.
Okay, the next thing we're going to have, Kevin Kassenberg, who's on our remote, talking about the support of a one watershed, one plan for the Wild Rice Marsh watershed board. Go ahead, Kevin.
Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to let you know we're nearing a milestone with the Wild Rice Marsh, one watershed, one plan. The draft is complete. The agency comments have been received and incorporated into the plan as appropriate. And earlier this month, a public hearing was held at the Wild Rice Marsh District in Ada. There were no comments received from the general public, so following that public hearing, the policy committee, which Chairman Gross is, is on, followed the public hearing and the plan was approved and recommended to submit it to the Bowser Board. At this stage, a letter of support from the local boards by SWCD Board signed in earlier this month. And that's basically what I'm here today is, is to look for a resolution for the county board's support of the memorandum agreement, but also to seek approval from the Bowser Board. And at this time, the plan will be presented as a draft to the North Reach North Committee December 2nd. And hopefully we'll get approval there and after that, hopefully we'll be sent to the full Bowser Board, which that meeting is in December 17th. So basically, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Yes, as you explained, during the meeting, I mean, the watershed board for the one watershed, one plan has approved this plan, but we need approval from all the different boards to move this on to the next phase. Oh, I thought we were getting someone in there, sorry. So we need a motion to approve this plan.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny to move on resolution 2020-37 to support the one watershed, one plan for Wild Rice Marsh watershed. Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Do you have anything further? Okay, it's Matt, yes, Matt's here. We're going to talk about the comprehensive and transportation plan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning.
Want to share this, so Commissioner, maybe you can see?
Get that ugly mug off the screen.
Oh, we got him back.
All right, well, good morning. Just want to come before you today and give you a little information about our 2021 Quay County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We'll be kicking that out in January. And this is a, just a short kind of overview that I had given to the planning commission, so Jenny's familiar with it. I thought it'd be good information for you all and then for the, for the public, anyone who's, who's listening in as well. So I'll start off by just going over what the comprehensive plan is. And this is something you've heard me say before, but this is essentially the guiding document for the county, providing direction in making land use development and other long-range planning decisions. It's intended to be a shared vision for the county's future by incorporating a broad set of stakeholders, including the general public. It's something that'll describe kind of the current state of the county as well as a vision for what we all as residents and, and employees and, and citizens want the county to be. So this is, comprehensive plans are in statute. It's 394.231, basically saying that a county that is not in a metro area or that is not in a greater, and that is not a greater than 80% area, which means that basically a county that doesn't have more than 80% of its pre-settlement vegetation and wetlands still on the landscape, may adopt a comprehensive plan. And there are a number of goals and objectives that we should consider within this comprehensive plan, including the minimizing the fragmentation development of agricultural forests, wildlife and open space lands, minimizing development in sensitive shoreline areas, minimizing development near wildlife management areas, scientific and natural areas and nature centers, encouraging land uses and airport safety zones that are compatible with the safe operation of, of airports, identification of areas of preference for higher density, encouraging development close to places of employment, places where people live essentially, and then any other goals and objectives that the county might identify as, as wanting to include in the plan. I will say that in our 2002 comprehensive plan, the one that we're currently operating under, all of these goals and objectives that are identified in the statute are in our current plan as it stands right now. So what is the plan made up of? Well, an executive summary, a community profile, which basically kind of gives you the lay of land of demographics, housing, economic development, natural resources, things of that nature, kind of describing how our county is right now. Land use, this is a big component of the plan, describing the existing and future land use. Another big component will be the transportation plan, which will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. Then goals and policies, we have a lot of good goals in our current plan. We'll be able to leverage the, some of the goals from other plans that are, have been recently developed, including the one that you just approved, a resolution on the Wild Rice Marsh Plan and the Buffalo Red Watershed Plan as well. Additional planning strategies, there might be some issues that are identified in the county that might need further analysis and this plan will work to address those. And then an implementation plan. So once the goals and policies are identified, how will those be carried out? So a comprehensive plan of this nature requires a lot of participation and working with MetroCog kind of proposed this framework for participation. The study review committee would kind of serve as the, the engine that keeps the plan development, plan process going. Be made up of a county commissioner, one or two county commissioners, members from the planning commission, board of adjustments, county administrator, the county engineer, the environmental health director, the planning director and a MetroCog staff.
Are you kidding me?
And then one of the things we talked about is how do we involve all the different stakeholder groups in the county? How do we get townships involved? How do we get our larger cities involved, our smaller cities involved, government agencies and NGOs, and then residents as well as industry? So farming, ranching, aggregate, commercial, industrial. And then county personnel is needed, since this is a comprehensive plan, we'll be touching on a lot of different things in the county. And from time to time, we'll need to rely on the expertise from other county personnel as well. So the proposed schedule is to kick things off in January and try to get it wrapped up by the end of the year. So that's a pretty, I guess, aggressive and maybe optimistic schedule, especially considering that we're in the middle of a pandemic and I think it'd be, it's important for us to balance the, to balance getting a good plan finished in a timely manner with making sure that everyone has the opportunity to contribute to, to that plan as well. Any, and I guess the request, the requested action today is, I had sent you all a memo with the suggested study review committee. And the request for you today would be to, one, appoint a commissioner to serve on that study review committee and then to approve the membership of that study review committee. Any questions for me at all?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, thank you. I thank you very much for that presentation. As a, a board member of the MetroCog Policy Group as well as planning commission, there's been significant discussion that's gotten into this and I can't stress enough how beneficial this will be to Quay County. A long time coming. The, in terms of the study review committee, the planning commission had a fairly lengthy discussion on who was available, one, to serve on that committee, but also to have a representation of a fairly broad personal background to their experiences to add to the committee. And I think who, the people here that listed that were able to do it really represent folks that are quite involved in watershed and drainage issues, have the township interests, small business interests, producer, agriculture background. So I think that this is a fairly good representation of those varied backgrounds that you had suggested being on that. It certainly would support all of those folks being on there. In terms of county commissioner, I, I think maybe depending on what this board thinks, it would be beneficial to have two county commissioners available to that. You know, I would be willing to serve on that because I'm on the planning commission as well as MetroCog and, and so forth. But I really think that in order for the county board to have a fairly good idea of what's going on in terms of moving forward, it would be helpful to have two. in terms of moving forward, it would be helpful to have two. Put that to your discussion.
Is FM, MetroCog going to be running this, or are we running this? Is this a board that, or a committee that we're going to be doing? I thought FM, MetroCog was doing the comprehensive.
Yeah, they'll be doing a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of that whole writing of the plan. And what the Study Review Committee will do is, it's a, once a month to once every two-month commitments, basically reviewing sections of the plan as they are drafted, providing inputs as needed, answering any questions, things like that. Just making sure that, that the development of the plan is kind of on the right track.
That it reflects the desires of what Clay County's growth will require.
Mr. Chair, you know, I was quite involved with this in the, in the past. And I, it's, there were some changes made years ago that I think have been very beneficial to our county in terms of not only, not only from the city's standpoint, but even in some rural areas. We've improved the ability for people who grew up in rural areas to be able to move back into rural areas. And I, that was really important to me, and that's what I heard from people. But I would, you know, I would certainly volunteer to be part of this. I think I got some background in it that, and there are some things that were done that, that before that I, I kind of want to protect too. So, you know, unless, unless Frank, you wanted to do it, but I certainly would, I certainly wouldn't mind being on this committee.
Well, I think having the Commissioner Mozo from the rural area, you from the city area, would really represent it as well. So I'll make a motion that goes to be appointed to the committee.
Second.
And second by Grant. Any further discussion on that? Or do we have to involve more? Is that the only thing we're doing at that point?
Maybe we should appoint the commissioners first, and then...
Okay, we'll get that. We got the motion, the motion and second. A motion by myself and a second by Grant. Any further discussion on that? Real call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Mozo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the Study Review Committee based on those proposed in the memo.
Okay, we got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant.
Just a second comment, though, that this, the members of the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment members would not create a quorum of the Planning Commission. So we were careful to make sure that that was the case.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I just, as it relates to, as it relates to development, I, I'm wondering, do we have like codes covered? You know, as we write things, do we have, or is that, would you, would you be able to handle that?
Like building codes?
Like building codes and things like that. I mean, right now, we, I think we go mostly by the state building codes in Clay County, but...
Yeah, so right now, we don't, Clay County does not have a building code. We just have our development code.
Right.
This plan would not necessarily be a regulatory document in any way, other than that it is, would be the basis for any future building codes or updates to our 2012 Development Code. Those would be, that would be the regulatory component of this.
Okay.
So this would just kind of provide that framework for how those are developed.
So this group, if there was a question on that, we could always bring in some technical advice?
Yes.
Okay, that, that solved my concern, my, my concern then.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we got a motion by Jenny?
We haven't voted, but we have motion and a second.
Okay, second by Grant. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, real call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Mozo.
Aye.
Mr. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Gross.
Aye. Okay, I know you're off, is that going to finish up that first part?
I think that actually takes care of both of my agenda items.
Oh, we did to the committee too.
It's a two-for-one kind of deal.
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, ma'am.
With that, we're going to go with the request for Taylor Radke, to waive penalties and interest for late payment of property taxes. Larsen, are you handling that, or who's handling that one?
We have, here's someone from the auditors office that's kind of, we're going to get Taylor Radke on the phone here.
Oh.
Colleen's going to patch that in. Taylor Radke?
Yep.
All right, we're, we're just bringing your agenda item forward here, so we will ask maybe for some of your thoughts here just in one minute.
Okay.
Okay, are you here for the Radke? Can we have Mr. Radke on the phone? And explain to us, or give us a lowdown of what's happening here?
Well, he just sent us a letter, or he attacked one another a few times on the phone, and then he sent in a letter that is attached to his agenda. A few of the items, he didn't get paid on time. And so he's just requesting the penalty be waived. He did pay the first half in June, and he paid the penalty at that time as well.
Have there been any other issues with late payments, or have there been in the past?
Did he pay all that was due?
Are you...
Just a minute, Mr. Radke.
Was the full balance on what was owed in June paid?
Yes, with penalty.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Radke, you want to give us your side, or what?
I, I couldn't hear what you guys were saying. It was trying to staticky something. I'm sorry, this is my first time doing this.
Okay, we were just discussing whether you've had any other late payments and whether you've made any payments like for this fall.
He did make the first half.
I have nine, I have nine houses and all in Morehead. And some of my payments are made through escrow on the ones that still have mortgages and the ones that are refinancing. And I guess my, my question was if there's anything you guys could do for me because I have rental houses. And now all of a sudden with COVID and all that, tenants are not forced to pay their rents anymore. And I'm not allowed to evict tenants. And I've been using my savings to continue to pay the mortgages on the houses that they're not even paying rent in. And I'm now behind on my taxes. I'm, I mean, I'm current up until recently, I'm not extremely far behind. But I, I know I'll be able to do something once, you know, once I'm able to, once I'm able to pay, once either my tenants can pay or if I'm allowed to find new tenants. But I mean, I've been renting out houses ever since I was 19 years old and I bought my first house, and now I'm 40. So I've been doing it for 20 years and always paid my taxes. And I have every intention, up until last month, my credit score was in the 800s. I mean, I always pay my bills. I just, with all this going on, I feel like I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place where, you know, I, I don't know what to do. But I'm just wondering if there's any way, if there's any way you guys could show some leniency on me and maybe make an extension for me? Or I don't know what, I don't know what even totally to ask for. I don't know what, what you guys are able to do.
Uh, Mr. Chair, what is the total, what are the fees on the taxes right now?
$374.80.
Excuse me, I can't understand.
$374.80.
Eighty cents.
That's the late fees?
Yeah, on four.
Is that for all of the houses?
Yep, on the four.
$379, did she say?
$374.80.
Okay, so that's the late fees. Okay, but he hasn't paid any, has any of the taxes been paid for October 15th?
No. On his, on these four, no.
So he has paid on, if he has nine parcels, he's paid on five of them, just the four?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, this is not going, this is unfortunate. This is really unfortunate for landowners, unfortunate for tenants. Everyone's in a rough situation. So I certainly feel that because of COVID, us waiving the penalties would be warranted. Mr. Radke, there is a agency in Morehead that secured a housing grant assistance for rent during COVID. Lakes and Prairies Community Action, are you familiar with them?
This is an agency that does what? I'm sorry, I can barely tell what you're saying. It's an, there's an echo.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Radke. There's an agency, Lakes and Prairies Community Action, that has a grant specifically for tenants in this situation.
Okay.
Are you familiar with them?
Uh, it's the agency for the tenants, did you say?
Yes, it helps with housing assistance and rental assistance. Community Action, Lakes and Prairies. I'll have somebody from staff reach out to you with that information so you can send it to your tenants. I think it will be very, very beneficial for you to at least, at least help your tenants, which in turn will help you.
What's that?
It will help your tenants, which will also help you, I think.
Okay, and I have done a whole bunch of that in order to try and help them, looking into different places that pay, just to try and help them out and in return, make it so I'm able to pay my mortgages. I know one tenant was able to get some money from the Lions Club and one person was able to get some money from, oh, I can't remember. They ring the bell, the Army.
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army. And I, I mean, I've, I've been trying, I've been looking at every avenue that I know of to try and help them so, you know, they don't fall behind. But I, I am definitely excited to hear about any possible other place that, that would help them try and get on track and in order to be able to help me get back on track.
Well, what would be your timeline as far as if we waive late fees? What is your timeline for paying your regular taxes?
Um, I, I want to do it as soon as possible. I'm looking into possibly even having to sell a house in order to pay off some of the bills, which is extremely unfortunate. I mean, I was hoping, you know, just to be able to keep the houses, even though I don't make a whole lot of money off of them. Eventually, once the mortgages pay themselves off, I'm thinking, you know, in like 20 years, it would actually be something beneficial to have my son be able to do. But I guess, I guess, I, I don't know if, any, any time, the more time, the merrier, I guess. But I, I will definitely pay it as soon as I'm possibly able to.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
May I, may I suggest something here? I, I fully support us waiving the penalties fees of 374.80. And then I'm wondering if, if for right now, if we could grant a 30-day extension to allow him to maybe work, his tenants to work with Lakes and Prairies. It's our understanding that, that there's still some money available through...
There still is a good portion of that money available and it needs to be allocated by December 31st.
Yeah, so I, so I think maybe if, if we could do that, I would certainly like to do that as opposed to seeing him having to sell one of his places just to pay those taxes. This is all related to COVID. And it's very unfortunate that, you know, I, I, we might see this come up again, you know, unfortunately. But I, I think there's an opportunity for, and I think if they go through Lakes and Prairies, those dollars, once, if those, if those renters are accepted through those grants, the payment goes directly to the landlord. So if, so if he gets those, and, you know, if we can get that done in that 30-day period, then he should be able to pay that. And I, you know, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we do that and then see what happens in 30 days.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I will make that a motion. I would make a motion to waive the penalties and to grant him additional 30 days to come up with those taxes.
Okay. Got a motion to waive penalty fees of 374.80 and a 30-day extension on your late, on your, on your payments. And...
I appreciate that so much.
Okay. Hasn't passed yet, but just a minute.
Okay.
Hold, hold a second. And we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant. Any further discussion? Real call vote.
Aye. Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Mozo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Radke, that has passed. I think the auditors, they'll get in touch with you concerning the process that needs to be set up to get these paid.
Okay, and they'll have the information that you guys were talking about as far as the places and how to contact them?
Yeah, they're here at the meeting with us.
We'll forward that.
Okay.
Also, for any members of the public wishing to reach out, if you're in a situation like Mr. Radke, the telephone number for Lakes and Prairies
Okay, so you've got your instructions, what you're going to be doing?
Yep, I'll contact you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Radke, somebody will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, with that, we're going to the budget discussion with Mr. Larson and our auditor treasurer, Lori Johnson.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you are all certainly aware, back in September 22nd, this board approved Resolution 2020-28, approving a certification of the 2021 budget. Just for our citizens' awareness, that, that certification sets a maximum levy amount that we can ask our Clay County citizens, and the budget can only go down, be reduced, not increased. You have a packet of information that you've been provided that Lori and I are going to walk, walk through with you. If there are any questions and comments that you have during that process, please just jump in. I did, the first document is just the resolution, which was approved by this board. The second document that you have, that we're going to touch on first is, is our, our sales tax. I think it's important as we move through here that this will have impact on our discussion. So we try to provide roughly quarterly updates to this board on where we are. I think there was initially some concern as COVID hit that we may see a drop-off. And if you go to the second column from the right, you'll see the 2019, 2020 payments to this point. We, we currently are through November. I would note that, that Lori receives two checks for each month. The first, the check is this... The first, the check is this, is the larger of the two, uh, but we will be receiving a second dollar amount, uh, later, uh, later this month. And so I would, would just note that, that right now, the total, uh, sales tax is three million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. When we, uh, when we, uh, set up the sales tax, uh, as far as our repayment, we anticipated a need for two million, two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and, and seventy-five cents. And so, uh, this sales tax is not the only source of payment, we still do have levy, uh, levy dollars, uh, that, uh, that pay for our repayment of the, those bonds, uh, but, uh, but certainly a, a good sign, uh, that, that we have more dollars than what we had anticipated. I would note, uh, just for the board, we've talked about this earlier, but I would note our June payment, uh, this year was significantly higher than, uh, than what we would see. Uh, an audit took place, and Lori wants to touch, touch on that, but an audit took place, uh, where they, they go to the agencies or businesses that utilize us, uh, and, uh, recoup the funds if they hadn't made the payment yet.
Right, and that was about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so, um, that was in addition to everything else.
How, what period of time did that cover, do you know?
I, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing it, uh, for sure it would have covered it, they usually do two years at a time, so.
For probably inception of our.
Right, and I'm guessing a lot of those, and I noticed that at the beginning, when we started collecting the sales tax, a lot of businesses were not connect, collecting the Clay County portion of that. So when they got audited, then they would have had to go back and pay that.
Anybody have any question, additional questions or comments on the sales tax piece?
Mr. Chair, just briefly, it, it's promising to see these numbers, I think it's, it's nice that they're above what we had estimated. It would be curious for me to know what purchases have been online since COVID. You know, I think it's, we're cautiously optimistic that business continues to go well because, you know, the revenues are good and, and people are still spending money, but what percentage of that, of that money has shifted from local business to online? And you can't answer that, but I just think it's important to keep in the back of our mind.
Yeah, it would be interesting, I wish we could get, get that data or have that currently. Uh, one thing I would like to make everybody aware of, um, the governor is talking about, um, some sales tax forgiveness for some of the restaurant and bar owner types, so just keep that in mind, although the things are good now and I anticipate that will continue, and just keep that in the back of our mind.
You know, I think going to, piggyback on what Commissioner Mojo said, I, you know, I, you know, I, I think everything is fine, I, I think during, um, this pandemic time, you got to remember there was also, um, even though a lot of places were shut down through the stimulus program, there were, there were people that were getting that six hundred dollars a week unemployment that they're not getting, extra that they're not getting now, and so I'm assuming that those things were, were paid for and, and spent and, and whether you buy, um, online or in the stores, the, the sales tax still applies, I, we certainly hope everybody shops local, but, um, and you can shop local online too, but.
Right.
But, uh, I think these numbers are encouraging and hopefully they'll continue, they're, they're far above what we had anticipated.
Yes, they are.
All right, uh, just wanted to make that aware, because we'll have some additional discussion about mitigation for, for the levy, uh, in, uh, previous papers. Uh, next, the issue I'd like to talk about is a summary of the twenty twenty tax levy by funds. Um, uh, if you take a, uh, if you take a look, um, we've, uh, in addition to the, the categories on the top, we have, uh, new requests, uh, we have a, a fund balance, uh, which we're proposing to utilize to offset, uh, the levy, and we also have a COLA, uh, COLA, um, projected. Uh, that gave us a total levy of, uh, of forty-one point, excuse me, forty-one million, eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, when you, when you minus our program aid, that gave us a, a spread levy of thirty-seven million, two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, which was roughly a six point two seven percent, uh, increase. Uh, when we looked at the new construction, uh, offset of one point two eight percent, that had our levy down to, uh, four point nine nine percent. Um, when we take a look at our, our new requests, uh, that, that we have, uh, for this budget, uh, all of these items have gone through our PIC committee, uh, and, uh, scrutinized as far as need, uh, and so, uh, the next page in your documents just lists, uh, lists the items that are the new requests. Uh, with our new mo, new motor vehicle location, uh, we, we did, uh, did have it set up for additional spaces to make sure that we're able to serve the public adequately, uh, and uh, there's a new request for a position there. Uh, the information services, uh, uh, technician, uh, also is a request out of that office, uh, with the additions that we made to, to infrastructure here, uh, within the county, there's also an additional request for internal service funds. Uh, uh, as you recall, when Mr. Dent, uh, has presented in the past, um, he's indicated that our internal service was low, uh, based on where we, uh, need to be, and that was with desktops, we are seeing, uh, we will see an increased cost, uh, as we move to, to the, more of the remote, uh, accessibilities with, with, um, with laptops, and so that request is also included. We have a victim witness position, there's a, a part-time position currently, or a portion of a position that was not filled, uh, and we've seen an increased need, uh, in that department, and so there's a request there. Um, we had, uh, Mr. Jacobson earlier, uh, talking about, uh, our, our comprehensive plan, uh, just, uh, I know we've talked about this in the past, but, uh, when, when, Matt has looked into, uh, different agencies for the cost of that, if we were not working through Metro Chicago, being anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand for a city our size, uh, and so, uh, we're looking, we're looking to pay for the transportation piece of that, and a few of the components would be, we, looking for roughly twenty thousand dollars, uh, so a good return on our investment there. The sheriff has some additional internal service, uh, issues that he, he's been before this board, um, prior, and much of that has to do with the, the vehicles that, uh, that they have and the increased need for outfitting, uh, those, those vehicles. Uh, we have, uh, equipment, uh, equipment, uh, small equipment increase, office equipment for the highway department, and then we have, um, a couple of different issues, uh, a couple of different positions in the social service department. Um, some of those are offset by revenues, uh, that they can, can generate, but, uh, there's a net of sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, uh, increase there. And so that, that, that is all of the, uh, new requests that would be before the board. Uh, any, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't have a question, but I have some comments, um, on this, um, uh, I think the new requests are appropriate this year, I, you know, I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to argue any of those. Uh, and just so we're clear here, that part of what we did to bring this down to four point nine nine was to use fund balances of one point two million dollars. But what I want to reflect there too is, in two thousand and nineteen, we had revenues over projections, uh, in that price range, or in, in that dollar range, and, and we didn't, we didn't levy in two thousand and nineteen to put money in the bank, but we were able to. You know, we don't, we don't actually have a place in our levy where we, where we, where we levy to put money in the bank. We, we levy to cover our, our expenditures that our revenues, other revenues don't cover. So I, so I think that offsets that, I think we're just able to transfer those revenues over expenditures to cover that, so you can call it coming out of fund balances, but I look at it as just taking the revenues over expenditures from the prior, the, the year that we didn't need them. So I mentioned that, uh, before the preliminary levy, that, you know, for once, I'd like to see us actually make a change from the preliminary levy. Um, I want to also point out that, um, this year, through our cares, uh, we've been able to reimburse ourselves for expenditures associated with COVID. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying COVID money to buy this down, but, but as we do that, those dollars will go into the bank, and they, you know, they, and I, I firmly believe that, uh, I would like to see us take a portion of those dollars to benefit every taxpayer in the county a little bit during this time. And I, Steve, I know I talked to you a little bit about this, and, and I'd like to see what one, one and a half to one percent would do in terms of dollars, um, you know, on a one-time deal to, to help everybody in our county in a, in addition to this. I think it's, uh, I think it's an important time, I, we just heard of a gentleman today who's, and that's one of how many that could, that could come out there, so, um, I, I'm not, I, I think with that, I think we can do a little bit more than, than what we've, I, you guys did a really good job in bringing it down to the four point nine nine compared to where we started with it. Was it twelve or thirteen percent or something originally? But I would, uh, you know, so I don't know, do we, Lori, could you tell me like, like, what one, what, what's one percent?
Three hundred and fifty, well, to bring this down, one percent would be three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so, you know, so we're looking at eight, you know, we, I think we're looking at eight hundred, roughly eight hundred thousand in that, um, reimbursement. I would like to, you know, and we can have that discussion of whether it's, I, I'd like to see us, uh, look at one and a half, if we can do it, and it, but it, at a minimum, I would, I would like to see one percent more reduction. Uh, that would benefit every, every, um, taxpayer, property owner in our county. And this time when there's, there's been difficulties that we have not been able to cover through cares, and as to some of these private owners who, who are in their, in their properties and maybe haven't been able to work, and this is a, just a little tiny bit that I think we could do for everybody else. So I'm going to, uh, I, we don't need this, we're not setting that final levy today, but I certainly am going to be, um, pushing that, uh, for us come December, and if I bring, if I have to, I'll bring it up in our taxation meeting or whatever too, but that's where, that's where I'm at, and I just want you aware of that. I think we can do it.
We'll have some additional discussion, too, just to provide, just a couple of quick other things to follow up on Commissioner Campbell's comments. We did, we, in addition to, 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 uh, to lower the levy, we also, uh, eliminated four hundred thousand dollars of the building fund, uh, that was originally set up to deal with, uh, deal with our law enforcement center, uh, and correctional facility. We reallocated the wind tax of roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that would, was, uh, associated with the repayment for those facilities. We also had a decrease, uh, uh, to seventy-five percent, or maintained, I guess, the, the decrease to seventy-five percent of maturing debt that we, that we altered last year, and that was, that showed as a savings of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then we had a decrease of extern, external agency requests, uh, of twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, for a total of two million dollars, uh, two million, six thousand, six hundred and six, twenty-eight dollars. So, uh, your last two pages are, are, are a summary of revenues and expenditures by department. Uh, again, I think Lori and I have, uh, looked over, uh, the document and everything seems to be, uh, in order, nothing necessarily stands out. Uh, well, I should say our, our emergency management stands out, because that's where our funding from, from cares, uh, uh, went to, and so that's, that is, uh, much higher than what we normally see. Uh, and we also have some FEMA dollars that are, that are in there. Uh, but, uh, but, uh, again, overall, the, the revenues, of course, are generally six to eight weeks behind, uh, where we, we normally are at, and our expenditures, uh, for the most part, uh, seem to be in, in line with, or lower than what, uh, than where, where we anticipated them being.
Right, going back to what I was talking, you know, you mentioned those things that, and those are all good financial things that we don't, right now, based on the sales tax, we're able to, to alter some of those things and take them out of the expense side of the current budget. But even doing that, my point is, is the net levy spread is still two million dollars more in two thousand and twenty-one than two thousand and twenty. And I, I just, I'm trying to get a little bit more relief to everybody, um, on this one, when we have an opportunity, especially on this one-time basis, to do that.
And I completely agree with that, where I, and I support all of it. Where I get nervous is about twenty, the years, you know, if we have these one-time fixes, that's great now, but I, it still doesn't change the fact that we're getting farther apart on the spread eventually, in, in terms of where the total budget is and where we are. It makes sense, because there's revenues over expenditures right now, but at some point, it will become quite a, a large gap to where we'll need to think critically about what that means.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, I, um, I, I just. From internally, from our, from our county standpoint, we've, we've done well and we've made commitment on COLA increases and those types of things. And, and, you know, looking at twenty twenty-two, there certainly might be some different issues that come up in some of these things, we might not be able to no longer put the four hundred thousand dollars, you know, we might have to put that back in, those types of things. But at the same point in time, um, maybe, maybe there will be other economic things that will be, you know, that will allow to do more things right now than taxpayers are struggling right now, they're struggling right now. People who are on fixed income, I, I, we could, need to do something for them, and this will help.
Any other questions?
Other comments?
Only comment is, the proposed tax sheet for twenty twenty-one came out, and I know we always have, um, uh, folks that show up to one meeting or the other confused on, on what to talk about. On your tax statement, if you're a property owner, um, it says the time to provide feedback on proposed levies is now. Uh, that, I, I get that your estimated market value may have changed from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, but there are meetings listed on the FAR column that give you the opportunity to attend the meeting for the school district or, um, the county to provide feedback on the budget, and that's that, this revenues expenditure sheet that the county has available. Uh, so I want people to know that, that you are welcome to attend those. The Clay County Courthouse, uh, will be open on December eighth for our six o'clock meeting, and my school district that I live in is listed as well. The only thing on here that I don't see is how do folks that may not feel comfortable coming to a public meeting right now, sign in to let their voice or concern be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo. We will, uh, our hope is that we'll be moved across into our, uh, community space, uh, by, by the eighth, and we will, as part of the, the announcement, we'll have a team's, uh, meeting that will allow people to, to participate that way if they do not feel comfortable coming into the courthouse.
And I think, though, people can know that they're, uh, just like today, we had a letter from a citizen, you can send a letter, you can email, a phone call, uh, this is a, a time where we need to be as flexible as possible to all members of the public, and I think making sure that that's listed on your statement when publicity goes out is important.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Mojo, it was very good information there. So as far as budget discussion, you are done there, or you got more in the presentation?
Nope, those, that's what, all we want to share with you, you today, as Commissioner Mojo said, we'll be, we'll be back with a, with a final, or a, a proposal for, uh, truth in taxation, and, and we can follow up some of the discussions that, that we had here and the direction that we received today, so.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, we'll go on to the committee reports. Grant, can you start us out today?
Oh, yeah, let's see, I had, uh, diversion authority meeting last week, and. Oh yeah, let's see, I had a diversion authority meeting last week, and just updates from the Corps of Engineers and the executive director, and everything is moving ahead, and I think we had reported earlier, everything is going pretty well right now. I had a EDZ, EDC executive committee meeting last week, mainly they're just talking about, you know, issues that the COVID has, has created for the EDC, and how they're going to deal with that in the upcoming year. And let's see, what else to have, oh, we had, had Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers meeting to deal with the diversion and the property acquisitions, that was it for me.
Okay, Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I attended, we had an audit committee meeting, that information will be coming out to the full board shortly, correct?
Correct.
So I'll maybe wait on that until that information is provided to everyone. I also attended a MetroCOCO meeting last Tuesday because the diversion authority, they moved it to Tuesday. Good updates, we approved the contract with the CASC Clay Food Partners, MetroCOCO helps provide some staffing with that, and then Fargo-CASC Public Health picks up the rest of it. We had a presentation on the Seventy-Sixth Avenue Corridor Study in North Dakota, Transit Authority Study, and then had an update on the Northwest Metro Transportation Plan. All of those studies and plans are available on the MetroCOCO website. That evening, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, the, we had an IUP up for discussion for Alexandria Products, a gravel pit that was approved, and then discussed the comp plan that Matt presented here, and discussed membership, which we've already taken care of. I attended the land management of the diversion authority meeting, good updates. The only thing I would maybe ask, is it possible for me to have those agenda packets printed off here so that I can have them? That's one thing that has been difficult in COVID, usually we get there and have those, and it's just, they're large packets, so can I, do you think Colleen could do that for us? So that, was that meeting? I attended, we had an AMC Extension Committee meeting where we discussed the upcoming MOU with the university, it's a bargaining year. As you recall, they opted for no increases in 2021 because of COVID, the COVID environment, and so we're continuing discussions as to what would be reasonable with that. I had another Extension Committee meeting on a hundred rural women, it's a initiative where they're having discussion with folks in greater Minnesota on COVID and how it's affected business and industry and schools, and a discussion statewide, which I felt was quite interesting to hear, how different counties and cities are helping to mitigate the COVID effects on their communities. I attended the CARES Act Committee yesterday, I think we've covered that quite well with our agenda items. I also attended the Lakeland Mental Health Committee meeting yesterday, we had a report from the human, or Personnel Committee, we agreed to the bargaining units for staff there, that was one piece. The other thing is Lakeland has really done a phenomenal job with, with adjusting service delivery and needs so that their budget could be reflected, and, and they're continuing to do well with their margins, but that's really because they were able to address items early into the COVID crisis. One item for us to know is their mental health unit, or mental health delivery in the jail continues to do really well, but they are shifting a little bit of the service delivery from those skills building issues to more telehealth. With COVID and restrictions, it's really hard to have that go forward for the time being, that's something that they certainly would be open to, but they did say they continue to appreciate the partnership because it's benefited jail users as well. And then the only other thing is, I have had conversation with the mayor in Barnesville, there seems to be some concerns on dispatch and response times and communication there, and I understand that you're having a meeting this afternoon to discuss that, that dispatch center can, continues to be a, a really good partnership for our area, and I think that we just need to work out some, some kinks there, but just know that rural Clay County is concerned about their service and response times as you meet later on. Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November eighteenth, we had a, we had a Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste meeting, and, you know, the plant is doing well, we're pretty much on our budget, we continue to work on a final solution for property insurance for that building. MCIT has come out and said that they will still cover us for vehicle and everything else, but the only thing that they're, they, they don't know that they'll be able, able to cover us on will be the building itself, so we're, we have a separate committee that's working on that right now, headed up by Bill Sterns, Commissioner from Wadena County, who's an insurance agent himself, so. So we're working on that, we, we had, we had received a proposal from a former commissioner who is an agent, who, who said that their underwriters could write a policy in that building, so we do have some, some other options, I think, but, but we, you know, we continue to try to work with MCIT on that. Then that afternoon, we had a diversion public outreach meeting, and items that we went over was the, the settlement approval that had gone on, and how we're going to focus now on, on dealing with the items within that settlement agreement with landowners and on both sides of the river and moving forward. And there was some discussion about property owner responses to the new CLOMAR that was approved, and other outreach plans, we do have a new, diversion authority did hire a new outreach coordinator, so that we'll probably see some positive changes coming in that area as well. That same day then, I also had the land management meeting, Commissioner Mojo covered that, so I won't go into that. And on Thursday, Commissioner Wayland talked about their more Clay County Joint Powers Authority, there were just some minor changes to task orders that deal with some of our land agents, and things that they do, nothing major going on there. And on Monday, I had the CARES meeting, and that has been fully discussed today. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Jim, you got any?
Yes, on Thursday last week, I attended the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Executive Board meeting in a virtual setting, and we heard reports from all the stakeholders involved in that, and the main thing was that the board authorized an expenditure of ten thousand dollars in conjunction with the City of Morehead, who kicked in five thousand out of that to conduct a feasibility study for a new building or space to rent for the Lake Agassiz Regional Library staff itself. There was some discussion about moving the Lake Agassiz Regional Library operation to Detroit Lakes, but that did not take place, so that's my report.
Hey, for myself, I, I along with Commissioner Mojo, attended the audit report, which will be discussed at a later meeting, that, then on Wednesday, at the Historical Society, and I guess we're all aware that right now, the Historical Society is going to be closed, till further, I don't know, December fourteenth, we can open again, whatever, but it's closed for now. Some discussion that probably going to be very serious, our Giving Hearts Day, if anybody's interested in giving the, giving hearts today to the Historical Society, we'd be glad to use your money to help to maintain, maintain the society over there. And we're just gonna, some discussion on how do we, how do we make people aware of things happening at the Historical Society now it's closed, what other things can they do or see from there, so. That's my report.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, can I, I, I forgot one, we did meet on Tuesday the seventeenth with Solid Waste regarding, we're, we're looking at our financial plan now, that we've gotten the grant approval from the state for the new facility, so we're making some plans and trying to understand the timeline of when we can see updated plans and when, when that can go out for bid. I think our, I think our hopes is that we can maybe see that go out for bid as early as February, so that's what our current plans are. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday after board, we attended the Recorder's Office Compliance Meeting that was, I guess was brought up earlier, on a recommendation for, from Commissioner Wayland, that we're looking at some different ways to digitize and make, make Recorder's Office information more available online. We had, had a Solid Waste meeting that Commissioner Campbell just mentioned, that afternoon, I met with RDO reps on, on the building that we're purchasing, and talked about some closing issues. We met with the state auditor, and again, probably be a couple more weeks before we get that report and brought before this board. And I also met with court administration staff, I think we, as a building committee, we met previous week, and, and with, with the different departments moving what space would be available for, for additional court space and court administration, that'll be ongoing. On the eighteenth, we had a department head meeting, again, we talked about, kept everyone up to date on, on, update from Kathy, CARES money, working, working from home, or working from, adjusting shifts to minimize the, the spread of COVID. That afternoon, I had a meeting with the city and county administrators here in, in the Fargo-Morehead area, talked about a series of, of issues, mostly COVID-related. Let's see, we, on the eighteenth, participated in both the MCC, JPA meeting, the diversion authority meeting that's been addressed by Commissioner Wayland, Commissioner Campbell. That afternoon, I met with Joe Olson on a series of campus issues. On the twentieth, we met with the building committee, or I guess the building committee met to kind of talk a little bit more about, hone in on the plan that we had, had just discussed. And Monday, participated in the coronavirus, our fund that's been already addressed here today, and Monday, there was another meeting where, with Clyde McCarthy, where individual departments met specifically to their location of the, of the new building location, we're going to have one more meeting on Monday, hopefully to, to solidify that, the drawings. Yesterday afternoon, I met with Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Abigger, and just did some initial new orientation for commissioners, and that concludes my report.
Okay. There are just some digital items to see on the upcoming meetings, like this weekend that we are closed, not weekend, but Thursday and Friday, everything, everything is closed, right? I mean, the motor vehicle?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just so people are aware that on Friday, the motor vehicle department in the Moore Center Mall will be closed. Another thing on the virtual meeting on December seventh, is there cost to that, do, do we?
Oh yeah, well, based on participation, will, AMC will provide us a bill, based on who participates, but if, from registration standpoint, just let me know, and Colleen will have you, will have, get you signed up.
Is that the twelfth?
That is, the seventh, Monday, yep. Monday from one to four thirty.
Okay. And this is also the notice that on Tuesday, December the eighth, our meeting will be moved to five PM. Anything else? We're adjourned.